Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can I just make sure that we're on? Should I just make sure that we're on before we start? You want to get going?
Well, you can make sure we're on.
Okay, sorry everybody.
We can go on with the pledge.
Yeah, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to put visitor comments off for a couple of minutes. We have a tax classification hearing scheduled for 6:30.
That's what you want to read is on the...
Nope.
Read that's right there.
The Hardwick Select Board will hold a tax classification hearing on Monday, November 13th, 2023 at 6:30 PM at the Municipal Office Building 307 Main Street, Gilbertville, on the issue of tax allocation among the property classes for the fiscal year 2024. Anyone wishing to be heard should appear at the time and date designated above. And that's it. Leave it to the assessors.
The Board of Assessors, pending final certification of the fiscal '24 tax rate by the Department of Revenue, hereby recommends that the Board of Selectmen retain one rate for all classes of property. The Board feels that the relatively small benefit to the residential taxpayer that could be achieved using two tax rates is not warranted, considering the dramatic increase in taxes to be paid by the commercial, industrial, personal property taxpayer. Hardwick is largely residential community that simply does not have enough commercial, industrial, personal property base to make classification worthwhile. The prompt term tax rates are as followed. If we retain a single rate, it will be $12.62. If we shift the rate according to the Mass General laws, the residential tax rate would drop down to $12.02 and the commercial, industrial, personal property would go up to $18.93.
For a thousand dollars of valuation.
Exactly.
Discussion? Obviously, these assessors are in support of us.
Yes, we are recommending it to the Board of Selectmen.
Do I make the motion with the hearing?
Yeah, I can't make a motion, so if you would...
No, I...
Um, no, you can close it.
Yeah, the hearing, you got to close it.
Okay, hearing.
This hearing is closed.
33, we got 6:33.
Then I would make a motion to accept the single tax rate as recommended by the assessors for $12.62 for the fiscal year 2024.
I'll second it. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Better watch it.
Myself at risk. We have another public hearing, but that's not scheduled till 6:45. We can be late, but we can't be early. Visitors' comments? Okay, new business?
The contracts execution for the electric vehicle incentive program for the charging stations, you have it in your packet, it was what you approved, you know, before I went out for this grant. And so, I just need some signatures.
And the grant will cover our costs?
Yeah, that was like $2,000 that we had to pay.
Oh, is it in this packet? It wasn't in the...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's... It's cut out.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Ten pages worth.
Right here.
I got it.
This, he can sign this, let's just be... And then this too, which is just, you know, saying that we have ADA, which we already do because the stations are already there, it's just replacing them.
11:13.
Thank you. The next grant is in your packet, it's the Hardwick New Branch Tree Cultural Council. It's just that it's in our bylaws that you accept any grant over $5,000 awarded to the town. So, I have to do all of this electronically and I can handle it, but I just need you to accept the award of $11,400.
I would make a motion to accept the...
Just looking...
Yep, it's right there. Oh, there it is, okay. To accept the grant that was given to the Hardwick New Branch Tree Cultural Council in the amount of $11,400 through the local cultural council program.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a RFP to look at.
It should be. Oh, no, the RFP, that's why I printed all that out for you, so you have... Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, I was just making sure I wasn't losing my mind.
No.
There was a small correction that I found. About the middle of the first paragraph has been awarded as a design bid build. It's really a design, build, bid, probably.
Well, I think we designed it, then we bid it, then we build it.
Oh, okay, so that's correct.
Yeah, I think it's design, bid, build.
Okay. And I didn't know if we should be looking for a schedule from them. It seems like they don't have anything to say about the schedule. Whoever we hire.
The schedule's already been put together between DPC and USDA though.
Right, so...
Want to get rid of that, number six?
Why, you want to put it in our RFP?
Oh, gotcha, yes.
I mean, all the rest of it speaks to various aspects of their company or their job.
Yeah, they're not, they wouldn't be looking at that.
Well, we're a little shorthanded, but you want to move forward, send this to legal?
Legal and have them take a peek at it. Yeah, and then we could fill in the question marks with the dates once we have their input.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Excellent.
Yep.
The only good thing that came out of the time change, not being able to sleep.
Yeah, I hear you.
Our clock is off.
Um, so it's 6:30, and we still have a few minutes before the...
Yeah, I have a, no, I just noticed that someone hasn't re-corrected our...
Oh, that's right, I keep needing to get there.
Okay, well, discussion, new fire truck.
You want to ask me to come up here?
Yeah, monitor.
This is just a brief summary of some of the NFPA chapters on preventive maintenance on fire apparatus that are in service currently.
Yeah, Josh, do you want to just sit up here for the conversations? It's better for the...
Yeah, I'm gonna just get the rest of my paperwork together here and...
So, I printed all of the things out that you sent me last week.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so we need a new fire truck.
Yeah, so this has kind of been in the running for quite a few years now. Engine one is a 1987 Pierce Arrow. It's actually technically by NFPA out of service. It's supposed to be out at 25 years old. Over the last few years, we've put probably about $30,000 into it. It's still asking about outstanding repairs that need to be done, exhaust system, et cetera, which I've been told outweighs the cost of the vehicle. So, that was in our last kind of letter we had sent to the board. I believe that was April, maybe?
I believe it was April.
April, maybe.
So, yeah, so...
We've been having this conversation for a while.
Right.
It's needed.
So, I've been speaking with Andrew Hillsman at Allegiance Fire Rescue in Walpole about transitioning to a Pierce Ascendant Quint, which is a ladder truck with a pump on it and a tank. So, that would be able to replace engine one and take over as our first new piece of apparatus.
Does it fit in the building?
It'll fit in the building.
Does that almost happen? So, I'm just...
Yeah, on the back of that...
Just making sure.
On the back of that information, we sent this Spectra on.
Yep, okay. Well, it fits in the building.
We did have a demo out as well and they actually backed it into our station.
Nice, so you saw that it would...
Fits in the station and it fits under the bridge.
Good, that's good too.
Santa will be happy.
Yeah. Now, how do we, how do we fund it?
What's the cost?
So, the cost that I have right now is $1,643,364.
Big.
And that, that number is, that number is good until January 1st. And we're expecting another like 5% increase January 1st.
Yeah, five to 20.
Yeah.
My guess will be to 20.
Yeah, we've been, we've been kind of back and forth with this with the AFG grant for the last couple of years about pricing. Four years ago, when I started with this, this truck was like $800,000 in the market and COVID and all that, as you know, with all the construction. Cost of raw materials is up just astronomical amounts.
What would they need to secure it, like the first years?
I'm not sure exactly.
Like, you know, to lock in a price?
They would need something, some sort of money.
Right, yeah.
And then it might say on the... I don't remember.
Because we may have to take this to vote.
Like, at least if they look at a...
Depending on power.
The only way to afford this is to go to a debt exclusion. There's no way we can add this part of our budget and still be under 2.5% for all operating needs. It's just not there.
We'd like to have a town meeting.
So, we'd have to have a town meeting for debt exclusion and the average... I did a 1.7 million and a 5.6% interest rate. This actually, I don't know where I saw 5.6, but I saw somewhere. I think that's probably average. USDA doesn't do these types of loans or the financing. The pool of money isn't big enough for a USDA loan, which we could, we would be eligible for, but this amount is too high and they're at 4.5%. So, the going rate is probably...
It's getting, I don't know, a bit higher. One of these, if you order a 10-year, it could be a percentage.
Right.
Five point...
Maybe that's what you're starting...
Yeah, 5.5, whatever it was. It comes out to about, for 20 years, it was $105 per year for a household, so double that if we did a 10-year. But I believe, this is the only way we'll be able to fund it, is to go to debt exclusion. So, we'd have to go to a vote.
Your opinion on a lease? I mean, I'm just curious, you know, why?
Well...
I don't like leases myself.
What would the, what would a lease be per year?
You're still, you're still looking at that same amount of money though. We have to go to a debt exclusion because we are borrowing just to make the lease payments.
Of course, yeah.
Well, that's it, the payments are just too high for us to be able to put it in our operating budget.
Because even $164,000 a year puts us over 2.5.
Yeah.
Of course it does.
It does, so...
So, it'd be better if we just went out.
And, you know, fortunately, the grant has gone absolutely nowhere, you know, so far.
Yeah.
Eight, 10 years, whatever it's been.
Well, we need the truck and if we ordered it today, we'd get it in what, three years?
Yeah, that's 18 monthly time on a new build. But there's a possibility of a demo model, depending on when funding is secured. We may be able to finagle a little bit cheaper demo model. The problem is, is they build them and use them until somebody wants to buy them. So, you kind of have to have the capital upfront in order to secure the demo model. And then they can do a little changing to offer our needs.
A few months ago, when we were talking, they did have a demo available and that was 1.4 or something, something, I don't remember the exact number.
We still need to go to town meeting.
Yeah.
It wasn't, I understand that's called right now.
Do we have money to secure it? Because setting up a town meeting is good. We'll have to do some education out there, tell people what we're doing.
Right.
So, if January 1...
Not meaning you guys really pushing for it.
January 1, we turn into pumpkins. We may need to do something between now and then, maybe? Do we have news ARPA for this?
No, we don't, we don't have any more ARPA and if you're talking putting down the first $400,000 payment...
You got to have the town meeting first.
Yeah, we don't have that, that...
We can't put a deposit on something without that debt exclusion.
All right, well, we better...
We have to have that meeting.
Well, absolutely, so, so we can't do anything until we've had the meeting.
Right, yes.
So, when's the meeting?
Yeah.
And what we can add with that as well is that even though the price per household, like you said, would go up, insurance and whatnot, having a newer vehicle and whatnot, that would also help with homeowners insurance for everybody in town as well. Obviously, the closer to the station lives, the better, you know, and whatnot it would be. But it would help the taxpayers in town with their homeowners insurance, with the ratings that we have and whatnot, which would also help us in future grants as well because it would bring up all of our ratings in order to do that as well, so I mean...
That's one thing over the years that boggled my mind, we're talking with PJ when he was there, you know, four or five times with muddies for it.
Sorry.
Apparatus, because boy, I would think just in the savings and insurance for him, it would be a lot of money, a lot of goodies.
Well, that's a good point, right, to bring up for the people, for the town meeting, for the residents, for sure.
It's possible that amount per household, again, speculating could, you know, might...
It would offset a little bit. I'm not sure I would use that as your selling point. I worked in insurance for years, so I'm not sure I would use that as your selling point.
It's a tough selling point.
Absolutely, it is definitely a tough one.
But you already talked at 20...
It's helping our rating as a town, yes, but I don't know if I'd make promises that it's gonna, that households will actually see that.
Right.
Huge savings, yeah.
Yeah, it's only $20 or $30.
They'd have to reach out probably to their agents and say, well, hey, my town just got a new fire truck and then maybe the company would be willing to look into it. You're really gonna, yeah. I'm fine with trying to set up a meeting and put something on the calendar.
You want to have another special?
We have to.
You got to.
Or, yeah, or wait until the annual...
But debt exclusion, is that a vote? Like, is that a...
Town, town vote.
Yeah, two-thirds is hard to determine.
Is it? Debt exclusion, if I say town vote.
We can't decide.
Yeah, we need to, we need to verify with Ryan on that.
The town meeting and then the ballot vote, vote.
Right, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say...
Doesn't matter the order.
Yeah, so it's a ballot, right?
It's like an election.
Yeah.
Something like that. Like a, like what we had to do for the horse track, right?
Right, it's just a secret vote.
Yeah.
Of the ballot. All right, well...
We may want his input on when is...
Yeah, because he has to...
Be voted registration and he's not here today, is he?
No.
So, we have no clear idea, this January 1 date might be, we might not make it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach right out to Andrew Hillsman tomorrow and get back to you on what we would need for an amount of money to lock in that price. I don't know exactly what that figure is.
Yeah, and then see if he can extend that, that price.
And if we're trying, maybe if we're willing to move forward with meetings...
He's been fantastic with me for the last four years, so...
I mean, the thing of it is, is you have to make it clear, we can't, you can't...
Can't guarantee anything.
A vote, correct.
Completely understand.
So, you know, you got to get out there and start talking to people and spreading the word that this is gonna come forward and we need their support for this.
Yeah, we need some informational meetings out there so that, I mean, not a campaign, but you have to tell people what we're doing and why and...
And I would just reach out to Ryan and see what days work for him.
But of course, the what and the why is right there. We're out of compliance.
Yeah, I mean, that's the bottom line.
It's very, it's not safe.
And we can't afford it in our budget.
Right, yeah.
We'll be over 2.5% to try to fund it otherwise, so we don't...
Could you do a motion that we proceed with this?
I would make a motion that we proceed with this, with a meeting and whatever it needs to happen. And Nicole's gonna reach out to Ryan and you guys can coordinate.
Find out what happens.
The date. Just keep in mind the holidays, try to be mindful of that.
Maybe we can outride the, you know, the good feeling and the gift giving stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. May like the first week of December, maybe, or I don't know.
All right, I'm gonna second that motion. I'm gonna second the motion.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Then it took a long, oh, this just a little bit, here, information. I mean, a lot of people bring up...
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did that already. They bring up NFPA is suspended, which it is, for all manufacturers, all, but also, yeah, OSHA has adopted all of NFPA standards now. So, not only we have to follow NFPA, we have to follow all OSHA standards.
Yeah.
Sure. All right, what do we do with the old engine?
Sell it and get the... Then in the meantime, because I've asked the board for their opinion, how much money do I put into that thing? It needs work, it needs, it's sitting there, it needs some work.
It's not quite legal, but can it respond as a, as a pump?
Of course, of course, but something happens.
Right. But if you had to set up a long line, it could be, you know, an engine every thousand...
Yeah, it's not dead yet, but it needs an exhaust, there's some, you know, other... It's without work, it needs some, it needs tires on the rear.
Yeah, okay.
Front tires are good.
Well, so do you need repair now to keep it?
Or can we see how this goes? Oh, well, no, because there's gonna be 18 months before, yeah, they're gonna need to do something.
So, that, that was my question.
Unless you can secure the demo.
And then...
They're aware that once it's approved, if it does get approved, that we need a piece of apparatus quickly.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we needed it years ago, so he's, as soon as we get the go-ahead, he's chomping at the bit to get a truck to us, so...
How are the other two? What's, the tanker's still good?
Yeah, engine two is gonna be the next one, that's a 1998. That's starting to show its age unfortunately as well. That's been our first new piece since it was new in 98. And engine, I'm sorry, the tanker is a 2006, so that's...
And that's an attack truck if it needs to be.
Correct, yeah.
And that, that truck we had about, was that Sunday, a week or so ago? And they had issues with it. Hopefully Wednesday, they're gonna take a look at it a whole. I hope Will is supposed to come up and stick his computer on it. They had an issue with it when they were trying to pump with it. And what you do is you put the pump in gear and you hit that, your transmission looks proccal to the pump and then you'll get a readout on the dash with what gear it's in. It was supposed to be important and that light was flashing on and was not going into gear to pump. And they fitter fired it around with it and then tip came home with it. They were gonna drill and wear. They came home and we fed back to the station, we couldn't reproduce it. It worked fine. So, I asked Will to throw his computer on it, see if the computer will bring up something. You know, that something malfunctioned or something. Or he's also going to check my batteries and, you know, do I have maybe? There's three batteries in that thing, so do I have one battery that's bad? And we're doing low voltage? Is that why we're checked or I won't know that until Wednesday?
All right, well, try to...
Hopefully, hopefully it's all good because if not, then we'll have to send it up to State Line Mac or the Whisper or something.
More money. Some expensive money.
And then, and then still, the bottom line is, what do you want to do, do you want? Click it or just keep hopping down or...
I think you got to keep it rolling. I don't know.
Yeah.
Bad money after...
I will add in that though, if we do with repairs that it will need, we will be over budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's inevitable.
Yeah, especially if I paid out of my accounts.
Regardless, we're gonna be with the repairs that any of our trucks need. We will be over budget, so I just do want to...
So, we can roll with two engines now. You guys can roll with two engines now. And leave the Pierce in the barn for now unless it really gets really heavy duty.
I think we have to try...
Try what?
To try to limp along until we can see what brings up.
Oh, yeah, for sure. So, you good, you know, it's your third line and by then you've already called mutual aid, so...
That's for sure.
It's a great truck.
Oh, it's a nice truck, it's, you know, the body, tire shape and the other truck.
It's a beauty. I had it airborne.
Perfect, you're on TV, remember?
This is all the other issues.
All right, well, we'll get this rolling and, you know, we'll move as fast as we can and hopefully, you know, you will talk it up, you guys talk it up and explain what we're doing. It's not frivolous, it's way overdue, so...
And I assume because that's gonna be coming up soon, the next go-around with grants? Go ahead and go ahead and...
Yeah, I'll try everything, for sure.
Absolutely.
If I can help in any way, please let me know, I know I say that all the time, but...
No, I'm gonna make sure that you guys are working together on this next grant and get it, and try that too because we're gonna have to fix or replace the next engine.
Yes, that needs to do, it's, it's hard to say.
And the equipment grant, you guys got that email, right? I'd love to help you with that. Make sure we get some of the turnout gear or something, whatever you guys need, I have no idea, so...
I don't know if it's worth coming to the grant writer or not. In the last goal, not, well, not, last year, the DA report, it cost us $2,500.
No, I think we can try it. We can try it in-house.
Nicole has some resources that are...
Yeah.
She's, she's been digging away at grants, so...
There was three or four different people that helped us solve going over that with that last year and I'm sure they'll work on it beginning this year and then apply.
We, we still haven't gotten a denial letter from 23 AFG grant, so there is still a chance. It's probably slimmer closer to the end here, but still haven't gotten a denial letter yet, so we're, we're hopeful that maybe you get that too, so...
You never know, the last, because you could look at it, I can look at it on my phone every now and again. The last time any money was put out in the grant system was 9/20. Nothing since then.
Well, you know, they, they might be ready to do, releasing the floodwaters.
Yeah, we know what people's doing, it could be similar for some other reasons, I know.
If it comes through, then we'll cancel this and proceed.
Yeah.
We'll buy two engines.
There we go.
Wait for your whore now.
Well, we're on the topic of the fire department and everything like that. Is it, I know your time is coming...
Coming.
December 25th.
To an end, and so I'm curious as to if we're going to form a committee or have some discussion?
I've had discussions with the chief and the deputy chief.
Okay.
And I think the best bet is to go with Josh stepping into the chieftain.
I think that needs to be a board decision.
For six, of course, yeah, for six months and see how that works. And, I mean, I really hesitated to try to find somebody out of town.
I know, there have been some interest in...
I'm worried about losing the volunteer.
Yeah, yeah.
Love it, so...
I just was wondering if there was gonna be discussion at a board level about that?
Anytime you want.
And if, if need be, if the board needs, I'm willing to do an interim chief thing if you need it, anytime to find a chief or whatever.
Okay.
So, you're aware and willing to help out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we maybe add that to our next agenda?
Sure.
To have a discussion? To have a discussion?
Yes. Was your birthday on Christmas?
No, before.
No, I think it's.
Just before.
Yeah, I could have.
It's not always when it's birthdays.
People are here for the hearing.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, you went too quick.
Did you need that or no?
I'll, I'll recycle it if you want, but, you know, we have digital.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The Hartwood Select Board will hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2023. At, yeah, at 6:30 PM at the Myron Richardson Building, Municipal Building 307, Main Street, Gilderfield, on the application from Whistle Stop under MGLC 138, Section 12, for a new all-alcohol restaurant license located at 248 Main Street in Gilderfield. Any person's interested in being heard should appear at that time and place above statement.
Um, Kat, why don't you come on up?
Down, sit down.
This is the application, I don't know if you guys wanna go through it, I did, it's complete.
So what's, what's the deal? What do you wanna do?
Uh, eventually, I wanna start off with drinks for dinner and stuff inside with an adjoining train. And then eventually there'll be, probably train rides with drinks and stuff on dinner. It's a building, stepping stone, kitchen, extension, liquor license to go into the extension. Probably be, probably be just before that. So we'll ramp up into the train that'll be next to it and then have dinner and drinks and stuff on the train.
Oh, so the application will show that there's a train car right next to the restaurant that they'll be serving in. If they want to start doing rides, that might be an amendment to your license, but that would be down the road maybe.
That would be, yeah, I have to change it because it goes through different towns, so I'd have to change it at that point. But to start with, we're looking to do liquor in the building and out to the train car that's gonna be next to it.
You, you built an extension or you're in the process.
We're in the process of getting the extension going, yeah.
And liquor, you mean, hard liquor and beer in that?
Um, mixed drinks and beer and.
Yeah, this is an all-alcohol, so it can go the whole way back.
Yeah.
There are plenty available. There's, I think, 12 available right now, so.
In the town?
Yeah.
It's gotta be something.
14 are allowed, I think it's just the historical amount of licenses that were given. Just went, because it's certainly not by population. So this is the LLA certificate. This is what you guys have to sign if you approve it tonight. It's for me to send to the ABC.
Yeah. I'm making a motion that we approve. Oh, do we have to close the hearing?
Yeah, you close the public hearing at 7:04.
Hearing's closed.
Did anyone, did you take comments?
I don't.
You might want to do that there.
Moving right along.
Okay.
Just following your lead.
Okay.
Are there comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kim Mongeau from the Gilderfield Library. Just wanted to speak in favor of the liquor license. Obviously, the Whistle Stop's our neighbor and we're ramping up our programming a little bit with some new activities. And we're hoping to work with the Whistle Stop on some fundraising and some other activities jointly. So we're definitely in favor of that. We'd be really happy to see them be open in the evenings as our patrons are going back and forth. So I think that we could really do some things hand in hand. So we're excited to see that they're moving forward with this.
Please.
Anybody else? How soon do you plan to start serving alcohol?
Probably around Christmas or just after Christmas. And then, uh.
That's probably when they get their license back to ABC anyway.
It takes a little bit.
And then probably, you know, it'll come in, you know, just as a starting thing right there. And then as the car comes in online, they would do dinner, it'll pick up a little bit more from there.
Lunch too, beer at lunch?
Yeah, beer at lunch.
Mimosas at breakfast.
More than everything. We're not.
Kind of hedonistic little.
If you don't mind just signing with the same time, that would be great.
We have to vote first.
Yeah, you do.
Can I call for a vote?
Can you close it again?
I thought we closed.
Okay, bye, all right, you closed. I would make a motion to approve the all-alcohol restaurant license for the Whistle Stop.
Discussion, all second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This happened before, you know, I asked Pearl.
Sign in this pen.
Asked, would ask Pearl for a beer sometimes, you know, for a joke. And one night she brought me a Bassett.
She was known, I guess, to give out some, some after-dinner drinks.
Good?
Good, yes.
Come here.
Thank you.
Exhausted.
Okay, so give me a call tomorrow, okay? And we'll get that signature and then I'll be able to send this off to the ABC.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
New appointment. Planning Board, zoning board of appeals clerk. The ZBA has started up and they need someone to take minutes. And Mr. Comerford sort of asked Lucinda to do that. It makes sense that she's planning for the clerk and ZBA clerk, because they're the same files. But here.
No, this is actually me.
Excuse me. What we're doing here is actually creating the job.
Mm-hmm.
And not appointing anybody. So what do you think?
Uh, I'm fine. Yeah, I'd make a motion to. Create the Planning Board, Zoning Board, Board of Appeals clerk.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes? Meeting minutes approval?
Yep. Maybe if I make motions for you.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 16th, 2023 and October 30th, 2023.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business. Other old business.
I don't have anything to.
ARPA discussion.
Nothing.
Committee reports.
In your packet.
Yeah. Those are the.
Yep.
Any other correspondence?
I do have two letters dated November 12th. From Edward Kelly. In resign, his resignation from the Board of Trustees of the Library and from the Council on Aging, effective immediately. So now we have openings in the Council of Aging. Board of Trustees is an elected position.
Yeah, that would normally come up in April. I don't know, the last.
This way, it could go on to April, you know, I mean, if his term wasn't up.
I'll have to ask the chairman, oh, wait a minute, I'm the chairman. I think, I think we can get along without, but I'll bring it up at the next meeting.
But we should accept these, right?
Yes, we have to accept.
So I would make a motion to accept both letters from Edward Kelly. One resigning from the Board of Trustees of the Page Memorial Library and the other resigning from the Council on Aging. Both effective immediately.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
The town administrator report is not here. So select board roundtable. Got anything?
I brought up my two cents earlier.
Well, I'll be looking for a final motion.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to talk about the meetings for December?
Yes, we were thinking of skipping the meeting at the end of this month.
Instead of on the November 27th, having it on the 4th, the following week, and then again on the 18th, because Christmas would be our second.
You can certainly meet on the 4th, I will not be here. So you should probably see if Rob will.
I will.
Okay, I cannot do the 4th.
We will just.
I made a commitment, not thinking that.
It's nothing that you have to vote on, it's just something that happens.
Um, I mean, could we possibly just have one meeting in December?
Could have the 27th and then meet on the 11th and that, that'd be the only one, or the 18th. Definitely have to meet because this is when you're gonna do all of the annual renewals.
Right.
Gotcha.
Well, let's meet on the 11th.
And then it's two weeks of holidays, I mean, then we, I mean, right?
Yeah, I would like to take Christmas week off too, so.
I think we all would.
Um, yeah. I'd be open to that, meeting on, you know, keep, keep our November. Meet the 11th. Will everything be ready for the renewals on the 11th?
It has to be, if they don't send them to us by November 30th.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Then they're, and I always, I even did it in my last town, I would go to the places and be like, hello.
You did that last year, I believe, or the year before, I remember you doing it one year.
Yeah, I go.
Is that okay to do that?
Sure.
Good.
Perfect. Now, you're ready for your last motion.
I would make a motion to a term.
I'm easy to be here. Um, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.